I talked to Dave.
He's like a cheers up there.
What if religious to the flag, we can have to save America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
Morning.
We have a call on the agenda in minutes.
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda minutes.
I'll second.
I'm on the second.
I was prepared to say aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. Rich.
Good morning. We received some paint quotes last Friday for our annual road striping and the quotes ended up being that Canine Painting, the Gilbert, both the lowest quote that we got. They do quite a, they seem to do it every year for us. Um, they were, uh, these were quoted between both counties. We should, we always send a quote out together, so about a hundred and sixty-one, a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars worth of paint. And North County will have about eighty-five thousand of that, so just so you guys know on the painting. Um, we'll let them know here after I go to the board tomorrow and Mitchell County let them know. And then, uh, I don't know when they'll schedule it, but that'll be coming up.
Is that just a portion of the roads?
Yeah, it's, we have about, we have listed about eighty miles of our stuff, so it's probably about half.
Okay.
So, and that'll include any, any roadway or any railroad crossing symbols or whatever else we have on the highway table. They were at twenty-three sixty-three at Mealem, so. Um, then we'll get our rock quote back Friday for our annual rock run, so we'll have it for you the next week. Um, then I did send out some, uh, uh, information back to me and Kay on our shop and some questions. And Lynn and the mechanic come in and discuss some locations of outlets and airline drops and things like that, so. We're moving along with that.
Close.
Yeah, I'd like to have it ready to go on the street by the end of the month. Get the site work done and foundations in and somebody can build it through the winter if they want. That'd be nice.
I was gonna get numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how much longer our front door is gonna hang. It got ripped off in the wind, so I fixed it Friday.
Oh.
See how long it lasts.
Are you full?
That's the only thing we got ripped off.
Yeah, the siding stayed this time with the door, didn't it?
But I don't think it's changed much.
Pretty nasty.
Yeah, so anyway, that's all I've got for this. I haven't heard back anything on, on whether or not any of those cap more greeters are available. And I'm guessing right now if they didn't tell me about it, they're probably not available. I'll, I'll contact Josh again and see.
Okay. All right. Anything else, guys?
Nope.
Okay. Um, drainage. First thing I guess, discussion, possible action on the watchman service.
Yeah, I don't know, I know we don't have an agreement yet, so.
Yeah.
I just, I just threw that in there.
I, I looked over that Sarvero one, I mean, I don't think it's a bad thing. Um, I think it would take, take, uh, the load off of Colton, uh, going out and doing a bunch of that stuff, which here and there probably isn't a big deal, you know, taking time away from him, but maybe it's something we should obviously keep considering. So that when, uh, we do need to go out and investigate stuff like that, then find out what's going on, find a solution.
And then you have that level of expertise too.
Right, yeah.
Benefits, what do you see? Nothing? Yes, no?
I mean.
You already got contacted, yes.
Yeah.
So.
It'll just be a different person I'm contacting.
Okay.
My biggest concern was if it was taking time away from Colton, from his secondary roads job. And I talked to you on Friday about that and you said, as far as you were concerned.
If it's something that he fits in when he's going around looking at some other things, or if it's in the right way, that's, that's one thing. But to go and traverse through private property to go look at something.
Right.
That can take a little bit more time, so.
Right, but so far you, you didn't have, you had the opinion that it wasn't taken away from you.
So far we're, we're, yeah.
It was doing pretty good. So then I called Jacob on Friday and said if they had anything, and he said, no, he said, we decided that we didn't need to enter into a contract like that. He says normally when Val calls, like fifteen, twenty minutes or half an hour or more, he says, we don't even bill for it. But he said, if you wanted us to come and take a look at stuff, we would and have no problem with it. We just charge that flat hundred dollars an hour like we do on everything else. So.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if they were proposing a service like that or not.
They did not, that was one of the things I, I thought about, you know, that day they were here. I don't think you were here. It was just me and he, no, we were here. Yeah. They, he didn't, I, I asked him, I said, did you have, he said, we thought about it, but we, we just can't see entering, entering into an eight-page contract over the deal.
Okay.
So he said, we're available for you. And he said, if we need to come up, I guess basically the only difference is they'd be coming out of Perry, Iowa.
Right.
Where the other one's coming out of Garner. And he said, we can bill from when we leave here until we get back, which is totally understandable. But, uh, that's kind of what we've been using in the past is picking his brains, right, Val? And so that was the two things I was concerned about. How much it was actually messing with Colton with secondary roads and if there was anything available through this other service that we got presented to us. I did, I did have Val send me some, uh, claims from Bolton and Make to compare pricing and stuff like that. And, and you saw on the, you saw on the contract. Their range in there depends on, I would imagine their years of service or something like that.
They're just, they're both right there, one's ninety-five, one's a hundred.
Yes.
Yep, on this deal.
Yeah.
But on everything else, there's a big difference. So.
They're less than.
Yes, quite a bit. They're charging a hundred bucks an hour. Um, a senior technician is a hundred and four, a graduate engineer is a hundred and seventy-eight, a design engineer is one forty-five, a project, or a design engineer is one fifty, a project engineer is one sixty-five. Quite a bit of difference there.
But that's only if you have to go further into a project.
That's right.
Right.
Yep, so. And I did read in that contract that they charge ninety-five dollars for the worst twenty hours. After that, they kind of figure they're gonna have to get in a more better, a different engineer involved or something like that, I would take it.
Probably more.
Did you read that?
Project specific type.
So the twenty hours.
Yep.
So, I guess some of that stuff's up to the next level at a certain point, so depending on what we're doing or what needs to be done, so.
But that's just stuff that I looked at on it.
So you're thinking just leave it open?
That's what I'm thinking.
I'm gonna sit on it for now and.
I'd definitely sit on it for now.
Just, not something we absolutely need right away, but.
No.
So then what direction are we supposed to go?
For Val?
Yes.
I guess my attitude for right now is, I don't, we haven't really discussed. I'd like to make use of both of them and see how they work out as far as engineers go.
Cause basically, I mean, in a sense, they're doing it anyway if we call them. I mean, it's just that they're doing a contract strictly with them at that point, kind of.
Yep.
Right.
And this way here, you can.
Call them.
Maybe it's more complicated, but.
Well, and who are you supposed to, I mean, what are you supposed to flip a coin each time or what do you do? Or do we wait for you guys to decide which one is supposed to be called? Or do you still use Colton a little bit, or do we need direction?
Well, for now, I just would use Colton just for a little bit. We can figure something out for the next week or two.
So I'm assuming Mason City's probably calling them out or Sarvero County, or they're calling them out every time like on DD eleven Main, K Perkins. They haven't gone out and looked at it, is that what, you know, is that what they're doing? Or, you know, in this situation, it's like, okay, we know this needs to be fixed. They're all they're asking for is a repair. It's not a big issue.
Yes, Sarvero.
You need that engineer or that person to look at it.
Instead every, even if it's a tiny, they call them to have blowout, they'll send the information to the guy and then he investigates it. So every single repair.
A lot of times those blowouts are fixed before they're ever gonna get here.
Seen that a lot.
Yeah, but is that right?
Right, well, I think it is. I, I, to be honest, I'm not, I'm not gonna expect a contractor to wait for somebody to approve that blowout. If, and I'm planting corn, I want that blowout fixed right now.
Especially if he's in the area.
Yep. And it's.
And we've done that.
Yep, and there's been times I've been tiling and we decided to hook into Maine and we find out there's five hundred feet of that main that's in bad shape that we didn't know. If we have to wait for an inspection on all that, then that, that's ridiculous. I mean, it's.
But what about the can of worms where you should have done the whole, whole.
That's always, that's always a possibility, but, you know, that gets to be a bigger, bigger decision than at that time. I mean, it gets to be the district's decision, I mean, and you get.
I mean, we are spending their money.
You know, and all that good stuff into it.
I talked to supervisor down there and he said it's too early in the program to.
See if they like it or don't like it.
Yeah. So.
And I, if you could say, I mean, it's, these two things on here right now, I don't, I wouldn't want to spend an extra hundred bucks on it to have it look at it or two hundred bucks. I don't see any reason to.
I don't need it, the simple repairs on that, right?
You know, maybe on that ditch deal here, we were looking at a couple of weeks ago, maybe we should add a blowout and look at it. But again, you know what was gonna happen there if that went to a full-blown engineering deal? Remont's, it was gonna be filed and the district was gonna spend a lot of money and that's foolish too.
Right.
You know, the, the guy finally backed down. So, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done at some point, but, you know. So, okay, well, we'll just play it by ear for now then.
Since we're kind of hopefully in the, getting to that lull of drainage stuff, but obviously we've got a few work orders, but those will still handle.
Yeah, and we got several projects we're gonna be dealing with the next three, four months with Bolton and Make and some reclassifications and a couple of ditch projects possible, so.
I have no problem with Bolton Make.
No.
And I, I would think that this new company, considering I've been working with Jacob for what, four years.
Yep.
I don't have any problem giving them a crack at it either, so I guess we need to discuss that.
Not something we can do, oh yeah, if we, another project props up, we could send it off to them, see how they react, how they do their, how will they respond? I mean, they're new companies, um, they're building your business, of course, but. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I'd say we just kind of keep rolling as is and hopefully if, if it's more than just the repair like we're seeing.
Yeah.
Then we'll just make the call of if somebody engaged in it. Whether it's one company or the other.
Sounds good. Good.
For now anyways, that's what I'd say.
That's what I'd say too.
Do we have drainage claims today?
No.
So we got the two work orders in?
Yeah.
Um, I'll take a motion to approve the, both work orders for DD eleven Main K and DD Main A Lat seventy-five for Perkins and Mark's.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, move it in second. Need for a discussion? There are none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. Motion will carry. There you go, all right. Any claims today, those in work? Payroll, take a motion to approve the payroll.
A motion to approve payroll, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Need for a discussion? None of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. Motion will carry.
No reports of payroll.
No reports of payroll.
Liquor.
Liquor for Happy Time.
Motion to approve their liquor license for Happy Time.
I'll second that motion. It's moving second, move for a discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, close and sign. Motion will carry. Cigarette?
Name change for coming go to Maverick.
Coming go out there.
Yeah.
Take a motion to approve. Cigarette?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Moving second, move for a discussion.
Oh, you don't need a second.
There is no second. I was prepared to say aye.
Aye.
Close and sign. Motion will carry.
Just made the left.
What's that?
I made the left.
Well, if it was, you hit it really well on that one.
That one's are different.
Yeah. Buildings and grounds, anything there right now we need to discuss?
Don't worry.
Discussed it already, so you guys are working together, that's good. Uh, it's Melissa on today. Uh, can she get in today?
Yeah.
She's on.
She's there.
Okay.
Can we hear her? If not, she sent an email. In case we can't hear, she finalized the community catalyst grant walkthrough with IEDA in Lake Mills last week. This week she's got a JPEC advisory board meeting, and I have Papa John, a call with the Iowa Women's Foundation regarding daycares and NCI, a percent of Iowa Lions meet.
Yep. Okay. All right.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yep. Okay. Wastewater discussion, possible action on wastewater operations. So we've got both parties here today. Um, Chris, you guys are on first, Chris and Heath. You guys want to talk?
Is there just here to answer any questions Jason had asked that you guys will possibly have some questions for us, so.
Can I right now?
Uh, I don't. So I just noticed something needs to be made today, but I would say it's probably by next week. We should make a selection as far as which for you and what we're with. Um, last week I presented a summary of the two proposals that were received. Um, and I know there was some questions, I guess specifically S and H that had been raised. I mean, full disclosure, we got this in two, two locations at the same time, raised at a different community as far as who's gonna be the person operating it. Um, you know, some people have other jobs as well, is your other employer okay with that, et cetera? And that was, I guess my opinion was, I wasn't the one to answer those questions. It would be the company that was, um, presenting that, so.
Okay.
I know you wanted to talk with Mitch.
Well, I guess.
Questions for Mitch?
Yeah.
Good.
The question I've got for you is, people's service has two employees within thirty minutes and eleven of them within ninety minutes. When there's a problem out there, we got something going on. You have three total employees, two of you work full-time at other jobs, correct?
Yeah, we have other employees or other people that we've talked to, a list of people that are interested in working either part-time or full-time with us. We can't hire an employee without a job for them. So we have no contract signed with either community. Uh, we do have other communities that we do have, um, part-time, um, whose affidavit operations. Um, and nothing says that, uh, any of the full-time people wouldn't be staffed doing this instead. That have other jobs. We can't put the cart before the horse, but we are committed and able to staff the facility.
That's my biggest concern is, you know, with the three, the three that you had, that you listed in your proposal, there was two of you working full-time and one that had a part, had a, his own business in conjunction with another person that could pretty much as, can be flexible in the whole thing. So he's probably more than likely gonna run the thing. I wanna know that when this individual takes vacation and not in the area, that somebody's out there covering that thing.
Um, I guess my best way to answer it is, you could talk to the DNR, we have a very good track record. Um, we have had to have people cover for us in the past for other communities, um, during a vacation or whatever, but, um, that, that would be something that we would have to plan as time comes or sick, sickness or accident or something like that.
Yeah, cause I guess as a supervisor goes, we need to make sure we got the best coverage out there at the most reasonable price that we can get for the customers that we have on this thing. So that was my biggest concern is, will this, considering, you know, do you have enough body count when you guys got full-time jobs to cover this if somebody's not available? And you're saying roughly you've got people in line, but you basically can't bring them on board until you got a job for them.
Exactly.
Cause otherwise, as far as the two RFPs, they pretty much did exactly what you asked for.
Both of them met the requirements requested in the RFP, in our guidance.
Outside of the sanitarian duties, I mean, that's another.
That's a separate.
That I'd still like to address with the board here, whatever that time is.
Because. Well, China from, you know, from corporate, you know, we appreciate our partnership and relationship over the years. We'll put that down. And we've mitigated risk because we have over two hundred employees. So we're able to address any curveball turnover. It is a dog eat dog world and water wastewater, and we can't deny that. We've experienced turnover, so if we have to bring people from other projects or different states to, you know, we're tied to a contract. So that as we've had issues and personnel staffing, we've always maintained our scope of work, so.
Well, I think the last year plus, you guys have done a really good job out there.
Jake's been awesome.
Fan, really good job, but we ran into some problems before that.
Previous few years before.
And it was, it was costly for the county, so. But, yeah.
Okay.
You got any questions, Mark?
No, you've been asking, I, I fully agree with you.
I, I just wanna make sure that we got, you know, we got coverage out there.
Make sure we're covered and.
And make sure we're covered, yeah.
Well, and how will the sanitarian thing work going forward? You have a contract until June thirtieth.
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, it is related, on our behalf, that is. And, I mean, the two go hand in hand. You know, we can't do one without the other because of that staffing. And if I could be just completely transparent with everyone, that has been more demanding as of late, being the sanitarian. It has, uh, the, the documentation has increased throughout the, the years. When we first started doing that years ago, that was not really a requirement by the state. And so the demand, the, the time that is consumed by the staff has gone up on that. You know, and the training has gone up. Um, and, I mean, it's just, we can't do one without the other. Uh, the sanitarian has ran out of the, that same facility office, you know, and I know that's a separate contract. Um, I think that expires in twenty-seven. Um, but there is a ninety-day-out clause on that contract. If both parties would like out of that.
We would, we would have, I mean, like Mitch, Mitch is right, we, all employees are tied to contracts, you know, so we would have to terminate that agreement. So, that's not a threat, that's, that's a fact.
Right, and I think Shannon's aware of that.
Yeah, she couldn't make it here today.
No, and we.
She sent an email to us.
We actually have a meeting tomorrow. Let's see, I have my calendar anyway, that's why it would have been today, but me and she had that, she had a ten bad credit equation, so. It's tomorrow instead. So we'd be discussing it then. And she just, she wants to know what's going on, she wants to make sure we, if we did make a decision today, she knows so that she can take the steps necessary or unnecessary, however, whatever we have to do, so. Yeah. So I don't know, you're ready to talk about it today, make a decision, and you wanna think about this a couple more days and.
Well, I'd like to hear Shannon weigh in on the sanitarian.
Yeah.
That'll.
Yeah, that's.
We can make a decision, you know.
Like I said.
What would you like to do? You wanna wait to hear from her or make a decision?
I know we're having a meeting tomorrow, she just needs to know which direction we're going. She'll deal with what happens, I think. Her, I mean, that, that's the second grant, though, I understand, and it doesn't change. Um, that's why, like you say, the two gotta go hand in hand. I, I get, I get that. It's, it's not profitable probably for what you actually do, so.
Um. Are you, are you behind right now?
As far as the well.
The well testing.
Yeah, well testing, we're, I'm behind a little bit, but I'm, you're considerably closer to being caught up than we were.
Yeah.
I've been bringing resources from the outside to help Jake on that front because of that. The demand this time of year has, usually does go up on that, the well testing.
And it is, that is a, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Once you get behind it, it's hard to, you know, and especially if, like through the winter.
Specifically.
It's very hard.
I've been bringing somebody from the outside every other week to take all those samples for the grant program to help Jake. You know, cause we've had an opening here these last few months, as you guys know, and obviously we can't fill that full-time. So I have brought in resources from the outside to help him on that front.
No, I think since Jake's been here, the response has been a lot better, I, I will say that. I know.
Thank you.
Before that, I was getting some calls on different well testing stuff, like for the vegetable growers and things weren't good and there was some bad communications there. That's gotten better, I do know that. But that's a full-time process for some, but, but it is what it is for the grant. I mean, it's unfortunate, that's, that's it, so. But, yeah, I mean, if you wanna wait, wait, let Shannon weigh in, or you wanna have a conversation with her, I mean, I know she'll be available later today to talk or tomorrow morning. I mean, like I say, we have a meeting, I think it, I'm not sure what time it is tomorrow. But at least it's on my calendar. I have to write now. Nine AM tomorrow, we're meeting, so.
Cause she'll just have to react depending on which way you guys go.
Yeah, basically, that's what she said.
Just let me know.
If you got that ninety, I mean, that's where she'd have to react, or you'd have to react in ninety days to get that taken care of, to start up with whatever, so. It's, it's not a, yeah, issue. So.
But yeah, that's, that was the questions I had.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure that we've got coverage out there totally, considering the fact that, but the idea that you have more people possibly down the road coming on board.
Yeah, it's not possibly, it's just if we get a contract, we're gonna have employees, but some employees' jobs are protected right now, or they don't wanna say that they're interested in the opportunity here.
And, and I'm gonna leave their current job.
Right, and I don't wanna put them in that place, so.
You need a motion?
I think so.
I make a motion to go with S and H environment.
Okay, and I will second that. Is there any further discussion? Okay, let's just do a roll call vote, over.
Aye.
So maybe aye, we will go with S and H, motion will carry.
So if I could add one thing to that is, um, can, we're, we're end up sending a letter for the, the sanitarian, and it is a ninety-day-out, but we're asking to agree to get out of that even quicker.
I guess it'd be how quick we can set it up with you guys, I mean, I think we should all work that out. I'll let Shannon know, I mean, like I say, she's doing a family thing today, but she, I think she'll respond.
So we'll, we'll send that out.
Run out at the same time as the other contractors.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I would do, that makes it simple.
Okay, good.
That'll be helpful. Appreciate that.
Something will transition here, so, yeah. Okay. All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, everybody, for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, department heads. They got any?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I sent you guys a letter regarding the legal path case, just to try to keep you updated. Um, like you say, it's been going on since two thousand and nineteen. I gave you figures legally of what it's cost the county, what I think tax, um, taxable revenue that's gonna be lost. Um, and it, it's ongoing, it's in my ballpark, you know, seven million is what they said out of that thirteen point six five, and we can't do that. Um, and we shouldn't do that, just because when talking with Vanguard, um, we did our reappraisal. Bob, the president, is very knowledgeable in this, and there's been two sales, I guess, come through that would support our values.
On that fall class?
Yes.
Really?
Yep, two have come through. And so it's just, it's, it's a tough situation. I'm gonna be talking to other counties and, and do we continue because we do have those? You know, in a way, it's like as much as we're gonna lose, especially, we don't know what they'll settle for. I could say thirteen and they could come back with ten, and they could stay with ten and just go on for another, how many years? You know, so do I.
At what, at what cost?
At what cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, and when it settles, I mean, that's a continuous, that's, that's, they want retro back. Yeah, and when it settles, I mean, that's a continuous, that's, they want retro back pay from two thousand and nineteen, and all this is negotiable. They could drop it if they wanted to. They could say moving forward if they wanted to. You know, they're wanting two thousand nineteen, seven million dollars for this part.
And we get it, whatever the agreement or however it ends up, we have to retro that?
Yes, that's what they want. We don't have to.
They're paying their taxes right now, but they're basically, they would.
But if, if it comes through, then they, we would, we may have to retro.
They wouldn't pay taxes for the next.
They wouldn't pay taxes for the next year.
You're saying we wouldn't have to retro that back to nineteen?
Everything's negotiable, everything. That's just what, that's what the tax reps want, from two thousand and nineteen.
Considering they're trying to cut it in half, I thought it was gonna be negotiable.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Let's just be honest, yeah.
I mean, they don't have evidence to back any of this up. They, it's the same that they.
They could keep filing.
Oh, yeah, and that's what they've done, that's why it's been since two thousand and nineteen. They wait to the last minute, we're thinking we, our attorney, well, let's drop it. I don't know the legal terminology for it. Well, then last minute, they would refile again. Then the year comes to where, okay, we think, then they refile again. So it's just been pushed since two thousand and nineteen.
You got a full-time attorney they're paying anyway, so they don't care, they're just gonna keep.
Basically, I, I'm not a tax rep by any means, but it looks like, you know, they contact the upper management in all of Iowa, this is happening with all of Iowa with Poet.
And Vanguard did appraisal thing, and it was just a little bit less.
Yeah, thirteen.
Which not that, didn't make a big difference.
Didn't make a big.
So they, what's the use of having an appraisal done there? And then they come in at half of that.
Right.
You'd mentioned in there that if we had to get another appraisal done, it might cost us another twenty-five thousand.
We have not done an official appraisal. Wayne Vanguard did it a part of the revaluation, so we have not physically paid for an appraisal yet.
So I mean, it, it's not quite like what the fertilizer plants did, but I mean, you know, and take a look at what Five Star did down there, and they got those plants written down. You know, it's, it's a de- depressible property or depressible equipment, and that's probably what they're saying. I'm not saying, I mean, they update it continuously, so they're always working down there and stuff.
Yeah, that's the thing, is like, it's true, it is to a point, but they're always rebuilding a portion of that plant, whether you see it or not. There's always equipment that's, and things that are failing, they gotta redo.
So I mean.
Well, and.
You gotta step to date.
Well, and because of code, you know, anything attached supposedly is supposed to be an improvement and have value attached. Well, that's now with the vertical, I mean, the horizontal tanks, you know, it's attached, but that's turning into personal property. So nothing has been, been determined what's personal property and what's not
Right.
by the Department of Revenue. Um, so, and I know that in this reval, they, I don't know the terminology of it, but sort of the grinding equipment is not valued. It's sort of like the beginning and the end.
The mill or whatever, it's not where I guess you're going.
Grinding is what I, I don't know.
It's cause they grind everything, they grind all their corn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But once again, personal property shouldn't be a part of this because nothing's been determined to be a personal property by the Department of Revenue.
Okay. Well, that's one thing, I'm, thank you for addressing that. That's why I asked you to do that. It's, I, I do have a concern. It, it could affect our budget if it did not go our way along with top Iowa, one wind farm being gone. And there's, there's a lot of money gonna be, could potentially be lost if things went against us. I hope it don't.
Right.
I mean, I could see some kind of settlement, but maybe hopefully it'd be.
We're gonna be close to reasonable.
It's gonna be close to where it should be.
I would rather say, okay, you know, they're gonna wanna wait, make, the tax reps gonna make revenue on this, even though they're getting revenue from the other locations, but, um, yeah, you know, everything's negotiable, okay? Thirteen million starting this year for five years instead of going retro. You know, it's just, everything's negotiable. It's just a tough thing, what, what, all I can do is throw something out and they're gonna come back and say yea or nay.
In the meantime, it's still costing us money. I mean, it isn't like we have our own attorney. We have to put a fund together that you thankfully have done, but.
Yeah, forty-eight, you know, thousand dollars so far, just in legal fees.
Over seven.
Since two thousand and nineteen, over six years.
Six years.
Naturally, they started in two thousand seventeen, so the legal fees there, but then they dropped it in two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
And then they started out, so really, it's been going on since two thousand seventeen. So, yeah, there were some legal fees in two thousand seventeen.
Is ours the only one in the state aisle?
Oh, no, there's.
They're doing all of them. I didn't know if they were just kinda.
No.
Feeling sorry.
From, from what I understand, and it may not be correct, this is just assessors talking, you know, they pull in small counties too. You know what I mean? We're not the big bucks, but they, but we're still part of that cycle of however tax reps operate, so.
They could win anything, it'd be huge to them.
Yeah.
Cause once one goes, it's gonna fall down the line.
It's that precedence and then they'll just continue.
Yeah. Well, again, appreciate it. Keep us updated as often as you can if something.
Well, once I give an offer, I'll let you guys know and just keep informed.
Okay. Appreciate that. Alright, any other department heads? Jesse, anything going on?
Anybody? I'll talk for Shannon.
Okay.
The exhaust holes for the furnace?
Yes.
Around the outside?
Yes.
They need to be cocked?
Who? I would say, I would get all of HVAC person, so like.
Larson's.
Larson's?
Whoever's, you know, that's who does all theirs over there, so.
Yep.
It's called Larson's.
Next one, I was in the treasurer's office to get my plates. Who cleaned the vents? I can't remember the name of the company. Didn't we have the vents cleaned there about two years ago?
I don't know if it was there.
We did hear, we did hear.
Through the sheriff's, through the court, duct work.
Yeah, we had the duct work. We, I don't.
I don't know that we did. I thought we did.
I think we just did here, cause.
I think we did here because of all the work we had done.
Well, I looked up and that's terrible.
Oh, it's been gross forever.
Somebody else looked up.
It's black.
Yeah, it's black.
Been there for forever.
So maybe we need to call, uh.
Who is the company we use?
I would call, there's multiple, Midwest Duct Works is good, um, or Central Mechanical offers that. Um, I think Serve Pro offers it, so I mean, we could get multiple. So personally, I, Midwest Duct Works did my house, I thought they did a great job, so I will. I would say have any fun. Uh, for city, for city, I believe. Should be able to Google any of them and find them, but those, those all do offer duct cleaning.
You guys good with me getting hold of them and telling them to clean, clean that out and get it cleaned out? I have one other question. In December of, not last year, but the year before, didn't we replace the roof? Fix the roof?
We had, we worked, uh, we did the whole thing, didn't we, yeah?
Okay.
It was leaking.
Well, were you guys inside and looked at the east side of the wall, at the damaged tile and?
Well, nothing was fixed on the inside.
That's what I'm, my question is.
Yeah.
And that looks pretty gross too. We really should.
Do you assume, is it?
Probably be afraid of what you find.
What's that?
Probably be afraid of what you find.
Nice big ceiling tile.
Big ceiling.
It's big ceiling tiles.
Okay, so then we should go get those replaced.
Who, probably have to get somebody in there on, on nights or a Saturday to not obstruct the business.
Some contractor.
Or any contractor.
Ex stringer?
Yeah, just to take them out and replace them.
Gotcha. I'm gonna contact somebody there too.
Bring her to the bathroom there, so.
Yeah, chances of them having any laying around extra, I doubt it, probably three times.
You should go buy them by.
Have them at least take a look at it, what it's gonna be.
Yeah, get some idea of cost.
Yeah, and get that, well, that Midwest Duct Works to clean those ducts, cause, yeah, that was looking tough up there.
Sure.
So.
And they, to let them know, they probably have to do it on a Saturday.
Should be.
Outside hour, or after four o'clock outside of business hours, whatever works for them. They just have to make arrangements with Jake.
Sure.
And if that's somebody that's gotta stay there with them for an hour or two while they do it, I guess that's just the way it's gonna be, but.
Thank you, that's the only two things I had that came to my attention.
Alright, the supervisor comments today.
What I had. I had P for C and N I C, North Iowa Children's Alliance.
Yep.
You know, for the state taking these programs over? Not P for C yet, but we figure that's coming. They sure don't. Here's what we're gonna do, and then they drag the feed, drag the feed, drag. Their guidance is just terrible as far as I'm concerned. Just putting in my two cents on it, it's.
I've got.
Your hands are tied though, right?
It's almost like your mental health.
And I've got that coming up.
We got, we got the same thing here.
Next weekend, so it'll be interesting to see where we're at with the progress of that, because that's what it's been, is like, yeah, we got the, the providers or the people that are taking this over there, but we're not sure what everybody's doing yet. And the people that are gonna do it aren't even sure what they're supposed to be doing, so it's, we'll see how the progress is coming out next week, so.
We just hope it don't.
Yeah, it's.
Right, that's the big thing.
So.
Alright, anything for next week's agenda items? Looks like we got some new stuff on there, so.
I put the fire on.
You got the fire on there, it's gonna come real quick.
And you're gonna be gone next Monday?
No.
When are you taking off?
Not until.
Oh, wait, on June.
June.
Got you.
We're off next Monday, next Tuesday.
Oh, that's right.
Tuesday.
Yeah, we're all gone Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm taking Monday off.
Me too, then.
But I'll be here Tuesday, with that.
You guys are, you guys are taking the day off, I'll cut some live, once you come on over.
Nope.
Oh, no.
What?
And Heidi's gonna be here next Monday?
Yes.
Tuesday.
Or Tuesday, yes.
Yeah.
I'll motion adjourn then, Mark.
Alright, for a second.
I'll second that motion.
Move in a second, all's in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion, okay, moving adjourned.